Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the April 20th Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Malloy, who is excused tonight. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, we have a couple announcements. Let me, before I do that, let me state that there are three public hearings tonight. If anybody wishes to speak on the public hearing, there are forums on the podium in the back. Please fill them out and hand them in to our clerk so we can listen to you during the public hearing. Post Falls Chamber Community Business Fair is tomorrow, April 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Greyhound Park. This is a great opportunity for our community members to interact with local businesses. It is free and open to the public. Residential spring cleanup is this Saturday, April 24th. Items must be bagged, bundled, or in the garbage cart and placed at the street by 6:00 a.m. For more information, visit the city's website, postfallsidaho.org. Community Recycle Day is also scheduled this Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. here at City Hall. You can drop off unwanted electronics to be recycled, unused prescription drugs to be disposed of by the police department, and paper shredding services will be provided by Mountain West Bank. And they do have a proclamation tonight. Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 20, April 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969. And whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city. And equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment. And housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability. And whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. And ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 2021 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Post Falls. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflicts, exportate contacts, and site visits? Ms. Rollum.
I would recuse myself from the executive session to avoid a possible appearance of a conflict of interest. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Borders.
I would also recuse myself from the city's center master plan, as I am a resident of that area and have had contact with multiple friends and neighbors there, and to avoid a conflict.
Thank you both. Will you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the March 30th, 2021 City Council and Planning and Zoning Joint Workshop. Item B is minutes from the April 6th, 2021 City Council meeting. Item C is payables, March 30th through April 12th, 2021. And item D is lease agreement with Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for Water Tower Antenna Space. Item E is surplus of old computer equipment. Item F is frontage improvement waiver request for 609 East 17th Avenue. Item G is new K-9 MAC handler agreement with Officer A Spoiler, Spoiler Leader. Item H is North Place East Addition Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. And item I is fiscal year 2022 budget hearing notification.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I had a question on item D, the lease agreement with Selco. I noticed in the report that it said that the lease agreement is comparable to what we have throughout the city, but I was curious about surrounding cities, how we compare with, say, those agreements in Coeur d'Alene, or Hayden, or Spokane, or wherever.
Good evening. John Beecham, Public Works Director. And I don't actually have that information for what competing cell space would be at a, like a neighboring city. I do know that recently AT&amp;T came and rented a space on one of our towers, and the rate was pretty comparable for space, both in terms of on the tower and then ground footprint. That is something we're looking into, how we can better manage these leases. More on that to come, hopefully, in the coming months.
Great. Thanks, John. John, just, I was just looking to see, I had sent myself a note. I don't think it was any of the official documents, but in one of the maps, the road was labeled Pipeline instead of Pole Line. So I don't know if that was carried through the contracts, but you may want to double check that.
I will check that. I'm pretty sure it's right on our things, and most of the plans in there are the plans that cell carriers using to build their antennas. But we'll check that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not an entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and the first is the center, city center master plan update. With that, I will call the meeting to order.
Hoping I'm clicking on the right ones. Yes, I am. Bob Seal, Community Development Director, City of Post Falls. Welcome back, councilors and mayors, councillors and mayor. Anyways, it's been a long day. I just wanted to introduce it really quick. This is, this is the addendum that you have had had a workshop on recently. This is the update to the city center master plan that we've been working on since last year. Matt Gillis and Welsh Comer will give the majority of the presentation. Again, trying to keep it short and sweet because we have gone over this a couple of different times, but we believe that this is integral to the redevelopment within the downtown area. And that the 2005 city center master plan was due to be refreshed and looked at and just confirmed that, you know, well, we wanted to confirm that we were still on pace. And that's essentially what we did find, is that with, through the public outreach, through the projects, there was a lot of things that really still were true today. But Matt will go ahead and run you through some of those details as to what we found during that process. And we will be looking for basically an action this evening that would incorporate the addendum into this 2005 city center master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, council, Mr. Mayor, Matt Gillis, Welsh Comer Engineers. And two months ago, I think it was February, we had the big workshop where we talked a lot about this. I'm going to abbreviate that presentation, but this is intended to be just a refresher. And I trust everybody has the actual document. So originally, in 2005, the city center boundary, which I think pretty much coincided with the original city center RDI, the urban renewal boundary, is tough to see, but shown in black here. The new city center boundary is shown in red. So there's an extension to the northwest, to the north, and to the east. And a small finger to the south here. In the 2005 plan, a lot of work was done, a lot of time spent, a lot of resources spent. And there's a lot of good stuff in there. One of the outcomes was, you know, we started with a vision, then we boiled it down to some goals, and then ultimately some action items. What are the specific things that we need to do to try to move the, move the needle in our city center? And so I'll just click through a few of these. City Hall Campus was a big one. Chamber of Commerce Building was part of that whole process. The first road project we did was, we called it a demonstration project back then, a couple of blocks on Fourth between Spokane and William. The next year, we did Frederick and William from Fourth to Railroad. Then as part of those two projects, that same year, we built the parking lot at the Centennial Trail, Trailhead, right there, by the I-90 underpass, very popular. Few years after that, the city and the URA partnered to widen, rehabilitate, revitalize Spokane Street through city center area. You've all seen these projects. As part of that Spokane Street project, we were able to improve the Centennial Trail Crossing with the pedestrian actuated yellow beacons that are very effective. And also, it probably goes unnoticed, but it does make a big difference is the change in texture for a driver to see it's concrete instead of asphalt. And there's a little bit of color there, but that fades over the years, but it is a safety feature. And then recently, as you know, the city was able to construct the Spokane and Mullen traffic signal, much needed. So the fruit of all of these things is there's some critical mass starting to form in the form of primarily businesses and offices. So we're not there, but we're getting there. One of the things that this plan is not, is, is, this addendum is not, is intended to replace all the work that was done prior. This, the focus here is, we're taking a look at the plan to see if we're generally on track. And if we're not, do we need to change course? And so part of that is reaching out to the public again, and I'll go into a little bit of detail here, to get from them, are we on the right track here? In addition to the public, there's a new stakeholder list. And by stakeholders, I mean people that are generally leaders in the community, plugged in, and understand the city very, very well. So taking the input we got from the public, the input we got from the stakeholders, and then the institutional knowledge that resides within your staff, we developed the addendum, which is, which is the document you have. What the addendum doesn't cover, which will happen in years to come, are things like the smart code. A relook at that, you'll see that, I don't know much about the smart code, but it came up several times in our discussions with the public and stakeholders. Zoning and land use and overlay districts, those are things that are probably a separate, maybe a sub-study. So because of COVID, everything was different, and so we had to come up with a different way to reach the public. We couldn't gather, and so we developed about an eight-minute-long Facebook video that I think John Manley narrated, did a great job. And we got far more response than we expected, 164, 164 responses, which is a, that's, that's pretty good for public-type meetings and responses. So we, we shared an eight-minute video, we talked about the plan, we asked them how they felt about it, and then ultimately, we asked them specific questions, so we can understand where everybody was at. So I'll go through these pretty quick. How do you feel about the original 2005 plan? Is the vision still the same? Generally speaking, yes. As you can see, we've got no on the left, and then there's some kind of in-between, and then yes on the right. This particular one was generally a yes. But why should the vision change? Why are people saying the vision should change now? And part of this, what I'm not showing is the commentary that we received below all these yes or no questions, where the sentiment was, yeah, we like the direction and what's in the plan, we just don't like how slow things are happening. So that's kind of stimulated a lot of people to say, yes, it should change. But that was the pace at which the development should change. That, that's what I garnered from it. Are wide sidewalks important in your city center? As expected, this was an easy yes. How about seating areas and street furniture? So benches and trash receptacles and bike racks, those types of things, are those important in your city center? Generally, yes. How important is mixed use? Do we need a mixture of commercial and residential in our city center area? Yes. Is wayfinding important? And by wayfinding, is there a, a designed set of signage that is very clear and noticeable that, that tells people how to get to Camelan Park, or Falls Park, or City Hall? Maybe not geared towards us locals, but for our visitors. And our citizens felt, yes, that's important. Whoops, yeah, this one. Is a common theme for downtown decor important? And all that means is, should it all work together? Should the light poles, and the benches, and the bike racks, and the railings, anything, everything like that? Should it, should it be all one big, well-thought-out plan? The opposite of that would be something that's cobbled together. So I think the people see the value there. Is a central gathering place important? And we're not, we didn't ask, what should the gathering place be, or where should it be? But in general, from a cultural standpoint, do we need a place to gather? Do our citizens need a place to gather as a city? And that was yes. In fact, this was the biggest yes, 61, of the number of respondents, which was around 160-ish. Is public art important? Generally, yes. And then this one's a bit of a mouthful. The, do city centers and mixed-use development areas require diversified housing options at higher densities than other portions of a community to support commercial activity? The way I understand it is, should there be, should there be dense and busy mixed use in your downtown to support your businesses? People thought that yes. So that's a very quick summary of the public input we received. And I provide a little more detail than the document itself. So we, we heard from the public, got great information, then we turned our attention to the stakeholders. And this group of stakeholders is completely different than what we had in 2005. Things change, leaders change, and so there's a, there's a fresh look at this. And we asked them several questions also, a little bit different questions, but great feedback nonetheless. So the first one is, what are our strengths? And one of the big ones was, we need to capitalize on our natural resources, meaning the falls and the river, which is right in our city center. The streetscapes, the, the feeling amongst the developers, especially on the, on the steering committee, was if we're provided a clean, well-thought-out, well-designed streetscape, then it's easier for us to make a decision to go take a risk and invest in the city center from a commercial standpoint, or residential standpoint. Public art's important, but a few of them said, just got to be careful with what type of art. That's, that's pretty tough to manage and govern of, anyway. What are our weaknesses? I think many of us would, would have said the same thing as a lot of the steering committee is, geographically, where is our city center? And then from a cultural standpoint, where is our cultural center? Other weaknesses are pedestrian facilities east of Spokane Street. Many of those roads don't have any sidewalk or paths. And then there was some mixed feeling on, which I'll cover in a few more slides, on the, the mixed use. Do we need more residential? Do we need more commercial? There certainly was not a unified opinion on that one amongst the stakeholders. And then smart code, again, I'm not an expert in smart code, but the, the feedback I heard was, it can be confusing, and it can be difficult to work within, according to the stakeholders, a couple of them. What's changed since 2005? Obviously, the population and our growth. And then the reduction in living wage jobs, a few of them mentioned that. Are we on the right track? Does the plan from 2005 still apply and resonate today? And generally speaking, yes, but consistent with the public, things need to happen quicker. And again, another mention of smart code, needing to be looked at. What are the biggest initial needs? There was a difference of opinion, like I just mentioned, on do we need more rooftops, or do we need more commercial? What chicken or the egg thing? So there was mixed opinions there. Smart code, again, streetscape improvements, this is the second or third time they mentioned that as well. Encouragement of mixed-use development, and then parking. The city has a parking plan, have identified and verified that we do and will have a parking problem in the near future. Then the last two questions were, is, will, and Olivia Metz will, will talk about this as well, but is a new city center district appropriate? Unanimously, yes. But slightly larger, several of them thought that the district should be slightly larger, and that the URA should aggressively target potential development. Is a downtown business association, are we ready for that? Ultimately, they thought, yes, it'd be a great thing, but maybe we're not quite there. But, and it sounds like it's in our future, at least from this group. So some of these numbers have changed. We made some changes today, actually. Like Pleasant View, things, things are evolving. But I mentioned that action item list. So in 2005, the, one of the outputs of the plan was a list of 25 specific projects that we were, that the city was targeting. Many of those got addressed, Fourth and Spokane Street, all those that I showed you. So we were able to take that original list, what have we gotten done, what's still remaining, talk to the public, talk to stakeholders, work very closely with staff because they understand what the, at least the infrastructure problems are in city center, and then came up with a new list. We decided to tier the list, and you can say the tiers are priorities. So in general now, tier one is of a higher priority than tier two. That said, it doesn't mean if the city is able to secure funding, let's say, for a gathering center that is specific to gathering centers, the plan does not preclude the city from taking a project from tier three to tier one. But the focus would be on tier one. And I think that might be all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt.
Matt, I just got one quick question. With the railroad, the, the main line going through there, and all the spur lines that went into Idaho veneer? Now, are those spur lines property of Idaho veneer, or are they still property of the railroad? So how would they fit into the downtown master plan? Because that's a big chunk of the property there, those, those spur lines that used to service the mill.
My understanding, I'll probably need a little help here, but my understanding, at least where across the Spokane Street in the public right of way, that's, that's still railroad property. But into Idaho veneer, I assume that there's a ownership change, but I'm not sure.
Some of it is with the Idaho veneer site, others is still in question as to whether or not, well, it currently looks as if it is owned by the railroad, but there is, I know that there's research going on to determine whether or not land rights or some along those lines were officially transferred, or if the city retained that. But they need to, the research is continuing.
Okay. Because, yeah, that would, would affect the plan completely.
Absolutely. And we do anticipate, you know, sometime in the next probably 10 years, five to 10 years, the railroad will no longer have a need to come down through the city center due to the businesses that are currently utilizing it, leaving the area, shutting down the older, older businesses, such as Idaho veneer is one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Public comment? Thank you. In opposition wishing to speak, Travis Chaney. Mr. Chaney, please come up. Give your name for the record, please, and there is a timer on the desk for you to watch.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Talk fast if you start running out.
Make sure my papers are in order here. Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, and members of the city council. My name is Travis Chaney. I live at 801 East Second Avenue. I'm present here with my wife, Kathy. Kathy and I have a great concern for the future of our wonderful city. Please know that we are not anti-growth advocates, but rather citizens who have lived in Post Falls for the past 44 years. Our children are also homeowners and are raising our grandchildren here. It is our hope that you have read our submitted letter of testimony in its entirety, and not just the closing summary. Please know our written comments reflect genuine concerns that we have regarding the construction of three apartment complexes within our peaceful neighborhood on Second Avenue and directly behind our home. Our letters and comments made at this hearing is not intended in any way to offend members of the council or employees of the city of Post Falls, but rather to serve as a reminder that a public servant, whether elected, appointed, or employed, is to represent and protect the well-being and property interests of those residents. I know the job well. I spent full-time service in public service for the better part of 40 years. I know how difficult that job is. So please, don't take any of these comments with, as offense. In 2004, I participated in the development of the 2005 Post Falls City Master Plan, which at the time was primarily focused on the area around current City Hall and the vacant Louisiana Pacific Mill Site. I want to share my concern as a committee member during the planning process. Throughout the meetings and workshops, city officials and business interests greatly outnumbered resident homeowners, especially homeowners from the city center area being studied. I understand there's a need for city employees and business owners to be involved and to help shape and guide the process. However, they're a great influence that determines the outcome of the final plan. In addition, as a plan is collated, citizen homeowners are not involved in determining zoning, density, or building design. These determinations are decided by urban planners working with city officials. The results in homeowners, this results in homeowners like us being surprised when the final report is reviewed in finality. The following are excerpts from the 2005 city center plan vision statement. The vision statement says, "The city center district is the city's heritage center, the focus of Post Falls' identity, and is distinctive in character, look, and feel. The district celebrates and reconnects with Post Falls' heritage as a historic mill and railroad town." The following examples that I went through the plan on 2005 appears to me that possibly the reference 2005 document was not followed. "Under the heading of 'General Land Use and Project Actions' near Fourth and Post Street, these locations were listed as reserved for green space and parking locations. As we speak, an 18-unit, three-story apartment building has been built with inadequate onsite or on-street parking. At Railroad and Henry Street, at the southeast corner, another multifamily complex is being built. This area was also identified in the 2000 plan to be green space." I want to focus on our neighborhood.
Excuse me, Travis?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you just a few, a few more seconds, but you're running out here.
Okay. I would ask the mayor and the council to please allow me to continue to finish my comments.
How much longer do you have?
I have approximately four more. I have approximately four more minutes.
I've got to defer legally?
It's up to the, council can change the restriction if you want to, but it's up to you.
Why don't we just say that he's taking his wife's say?
Is Kathy, is Kathy going to add additional comment to yours or?
She is.
Oh.
Tell you what, why don't we split it, why don't we give you another two to three minutes, but try to wrap it up if you can. And the reason we do that is, that's what's stated in the agenda, and if we don't, then we have to do it for everyone.
This is really pared down from what it was going to be, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, I thank you.
Hang on one second, is that okay with council?
Yes.
I just want to.
Yes.
We, we've read your letter, so a lot of the stuff you stated in here, I don't know if bears repeating or not, but.
Well, I'm going on to now, new things specifically in the plan itself.
Okay. It's okay with me. Good.
Okay, thank you. Excerpts from the city is a safe residential core, yeah, wait a minute. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll stop it. Shelley, give him a few seconds.
Experts, excerpts from the 2005 city center plan says that it's a safe livable residential core is in place, especially in the southern part of the district. Page 51 states, "Second Avenue is the most quietest and most protected residential street in the study area. Nearly all lots fronting Second Avenue are single-family residential homes. Second Avenue's character as a solid residential street is a design asset." On page 65, at that time in 2005, there were 36% housing units in the city were rented versus 24 overall in the city were homeowners or renters for, for the total city. Urban planners use terms such as underutilized lots, poorly maintained, or this area is in need of infill or more density. However, in stark contract, trust to the perspective of an urban planner, homeowners and residents view the same lots as open and spacious and critical for the preservation of the historical townsite of Post Falls. Cited throughout the 2005 city center plan is the need to preserve the original character and heritage of the area. The question is, whose definition do we side with? An urban planner or the residents that live in the area being transformed? How is building numerous multi-story, multifamily apartment buildings on Second Avenue, which is described as the most quietest, how is that preserving heritage and character of our historic townsite? Who decides what fits in the neighborhood? The answer has been city officials. The homeowners are not notified or consulted, but will live with it. In closing, I encourage each council member and other city officials to visit the apartment now under construction in the 700 block of Second Avenue. Stand on the balcony overlooking these homes and ask yourself, if this was my home, would I like to have multiple windows and balconies overlooking my windows from an elevated vantage point? Would I be at peace with apartment residents constantly surveilling my children or me within the privacy of my yard? Why do city officials have the sole right to place extended-height apartments next to my established, single-family home? Why do they have the authority to violate my family's basic right to visual and conversational privacy within my home or yard? Why are city officials empowered to place three-story apartments which block territorial views and sunlight during long winter months? And why are city officials allowed to make homeowner's six-foot privacy fence obsolete by placing towering apartments without a buffer zone? You have read and heard our testimony tonight. It is our belief the 2021 master plan update with expanded boundaries is too massive in size and aggressive in scope, especially when it comes to preserving the historical character laid out in the original 2005 master plan. In addition, you have heard examples of buildings being built and identified in the 2000 plan as being reserved for green space or parking. It is clear the plan may not have been used as a guiding document for future development within the city. Therefore, at this time and based upon stated testimony, I am opposed to the approval of the 2021 master plan, and thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. We're doing it a little bit out of order because there's one in favor, but we got it a little bit late. So we're doing the, in opposition first, and then we're going to flip back to those in favor. So we have one more. Kathy Chaney in opposition wishing to speak. Again, please keep an eye on the, on the timer.
Hi, my name is Kathy Chaney, I live at 801 East Second. I'm here to oppose the master plan that will forever change the neighborhood that I live in and love. Just because there's a couple of us here tonight to speak out doesn't mean the neighbors don't care what's happening. They say, why bother? The city does, doesn't care how we feel, doesn't listen to opposing comments, they do what they want. You know the old saying, you can't fight city hall. I want you all to know what your smart code is doing to my part of town, my neighborhood. My husband and I moved from Coeur d'Alene to Post Falls 44 years ago. We looked for a month or so for the perfect home and neighborhood to live and raise kids. We found our forever home, bought it, and we're still living there. What we have here in the old part of Post Falls is the rural feel within a city. We have open spaces, bigger lots, great neighbors, and may I say, half or more of them still live there. A very stable neighborhood. You know the people around you who bought here for the same reason, space. Now you are telling us we can't live like that, and you're planning to change the way we choose to live. What you see is infill, tax dollars, wasted space. What we see is privacy, space to breathe, not on top of each other. You are going to destroy the best part of Post Falls with density, high-rise apartment buildings, businesses within single-family resident home. When homes go up for sale in my area, they get bought up by developers who see bigger lots, dollar signs, and do to city's smart code, a apartment building goes up that looks into other people's yards and lives. The council, every one of you would not want to live next to an apartment building. You need to put yourselves, self in our shoes, you are to have our best interest in mind, not developer, developers who don't live here, but line their pocket with money and then walk away. We still have to live here with all the mess and all the mistakes. Could we move? We could move, but why should we have to move from our home of 44 years? What you want to do is not in the best interest of the neighborhood. You need to step back, take a closer look, drive around, and see the unique charm this part of town has. To move forward with what, what's in your plan will forever ruin the area here. When we bought in 77, we knew commercial was north side of Third Avenue. It wasn't supposed to flow into neighborhoods. People who buy homes here should feel safe, have their privacy within their own, in their homes and yard. They should be able to go in their fence backyard and have a barbecue without prying eyes from all directions. No more high-rise apartments. Let the residents have privacy. It's an invasion on their everyday life. And just a little bit more. When my husband and I are out working in our yard, I can't tell you the amount of people that pull over and ask us if we know of any houses going up for sale in our area. They state how open and beautiful it is, wide streets. Residents that live in this part of town like it just the way it is. Looking at setback homes with grass growing to the street, feeling the charm of openness and very little concrete. Keep this area unique, not like most of Post Falls, crowded, stacked on top of each other, and no place to park. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in favor, Mike, I hope I get this right, Pellicero?
Pellicero.
Okay, if I wanted to be absolutely perfect, how would I say it?
Pellicero.
Okay.
Some people add a couple Rs, a few S's, things like that there. Uh, Mike Pellicero. Just so far from what I've seen what's been done, I mean, the Centennial Trail, preserving that has been great. The only thing I'd like to, I mentioned it to Mr. Seal a couple of weeks ago, is, is you're moving forward with this and having a nice gathering place, people can come to eat, things like that. See if you can't find someplace and agreements or whatever to have some boat parking where people could come, park their boat, walk up to Sawmill Grill or the coffee places or things like that there, maybe make that as a part of your, some of that initial stuff to start acquiring something. I don't know if you have to work an agreement or what could be done, but I think that'd be a great, a great avenue because you're out on the lake, the river, whatever, there's, there's really no places, and we go down to Harrison sometimes just for an ice cream, and the only other place really to do that is up at like La Peep's and stuff like that, and that's like, that's not a no-wake zone. So if you're parking your boat, you're trying to find someplace on the inside, and we've sometimes just gone up to Cold Stone. So maybe if you could maybe add that as part of the plan, I think it would be a real benefit to people being able to come and visit and things like that there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob, any, Matt, any rebuttal, anything said?
Just as kind of a note, when it does come to, to development that has started into the downtown area, that is happening, that does, is due to the, the zoning code that was created as a result of, as a result of the city center master plan. No code is perfect in terms of how it is created and implemented. The height of the buildings are essentially the same for a multifamily project as is for a single-family project. Single-family homes can be built to 35 feet as well. You know, so, and there is going to be, you know, obviously growing pains when there is a process of the evolution within, and within any area as they begin to transform. But I do recognize, you know, their, their concerns and how that has, has been begun to happen. I know that the zoning districts, there are, you know, various zoning districts within the downtown area currently, there is the SC five, the SC four, and I believe even in the R one, maybe even down along First Street and between there and Second, so, you know, there's a variety, but that is controlled by the zoning code, which again was influenced by the comprehensive plan as well as the city center master plan as it was created.
Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to start out with a couple of comments. I lived in that neighborhood for 20 years. I remember when River Run went in, we came to city council, we spoke against it, thinking that would not be a good fit for the neighborhood. And actually, that one, but it's not multifamily, that one turned out to be a pretty good match for that neighborhood, but we were concerned with traffic, additional houses, et cetera. I was driving down Third Street, Fourth Street, and in the rearview mirror, I see this three-story apartment building going up. So I had to turn around and go look at it, and visited with city administrator and, and Bob Seal, we took a tour. There was a loophole where that was allowed to be built without off-street parking. Since then, council has changed the parking requirements to prohibit that from occurring in the future. That's an 18, as I recall, that's an 18-unit multifamily with no onsite parking or very limited. That was a mistake. It was allowed, it was a loophole, but that has been closed. I always hate to say this, but I voted in favor of smart code as a councilman. I thought if we were led to believe that was going to be the greatest thing since sliced bread, and I've really not seen anything about smart code that I like, and I know that I've kind of pushed to try to eliminate that zoning, but it's extremely lengthy process. I know when I asked if it could be done in a couple of months, I was laughed at. But I'm, I'm not a fan of that. But I think my concern with the zoning that's down there right now is that it does in fact allow for higher density, and I'm not opposed to it in some locations, but it seems to me that that's, when you get off Spokane Street, that's, that's what we're seeing now is higher density, multifamily. Again, when you look at the vacancy factor, they say we need more multifamily, but I, I understand that if you're, have a, a home there and you start seeing all these apartments going up, that, that's difficult, and I do understand that concern. But I'm not opposed to the addendum itself, but I want to make sure that as we move forward, any of these loopholes that we've seen are closed and or eliminated, so we don't have these, I will call it a three-story monstrosity because it has no parking, I don't want to see that occur again. I think the, the majority of the plan is good. I like the idea to try to develop Spokane Street, that's something I've wanted to do for a long time. I think we're starting to see some businesses and commercial coming in, and I think that's good. But I, I do appreciate the concerns expressed by the Chaney's as far as the number of multifamily units that are being built. And again, people will buy the lots, tear the house down, it's an opportunity for multifamily. So that would be my one concern with it, but as far as the amendment itself to the master plan, you know, the majority of it to me is, it makes a lot of sense, so that's my two cents. Carrie.
Well, I, I have a question, and since the Chaney's are here, and talking specifically about theirs. So my question is, you could put an apartment, we talk about buffers when we're looking out there, you know, between commercial, industrial, all of that, and what kind of buffer is there going to be between residential? So is there anything, I'm picturing somebody's back fence with an apartment complex?
Bob, you want to come up? And you know, I, I would point out, remember the, the testimony we had when I think it was Fieldstone with the apartments going in, the three stories, and, you know, I don't believe there was at that point any kind of buffering requirement, but I remember that was a big issue at that point as well. Bob?
No, I don't believe there is a buffering requirement for multifamily projects of this, of these types. You know, I mean, we have implemented newer multifamily design standards that were created after some of the projects have already begun or been approved. The one on railroad does meet those newer standards, I believe, including additional park, again, including additional parking beyond what was originally, what was required when the one at Post and Fourth was being constructed. We modified it at that point. The ones that are down on Second Street, I don't believe we changed anything within that zone regarding the parking requirements. However, since those have been approved, there is additional open space that is required per unit now that you guys had approved somewhat recently, sometime in the last six months. But when it comes to buffering, no, there isn't anything established at this time. If you do go to, you know, certain urban neighborhoods or city center type of neighborhoods, a lot, even, you know, go to downtown Coeur d'Alene, you're not going to see specific buffering created between a multifamily project, townhomes or apartments or whatever they may be, and adjacent, single families, not typically. Sometimes I have seen in other, in some jurisdictions that over a certain height limit, they are required to step in or to increase the setbacks for projects, but that's usually, usually when I've seen that is when it's in excess of 35 feet, in situations where it's allowed to go to say 55 feet or something along those lines. Whereas I believe in the downtown, in the SC five or SC four, specific for these, this area, I believe 35 feet is the limit for a multifamily project. Not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Thank you. Jay, Carrie?
I, I was going to add one more thing, and, and then Al, do you have a comment?
I do. Okay. One thing I did men, forget to mention was, and I talked with Councilman Borders on this, but there was a fourplex where two of the units were accessed from an unimproved alleyway. And again, to me, that was kind of a loophole, and I think we've talked about that, I don't think, we did talk about that and how to eliminate and prevent that from occurring again. So that was just another concern I had with some of the things that had been built, so I wanted to share that. Al?
I just wanted to appeal to the, the Chaney's, reading the letter, and I don't want, I wouldn't want that either. I can tell you from all those years on planning and zoning and sitting on the council, we don't have a crystal ball to see what's going to happen when a lot of this is brought forward. And I was there on planning and zoning when we approved smart code, and, and we, we did. We thought it was going to be the, the next best thing since sliced bread, and maybe it hasn't worked out that way. And I guess my only comment tonight would be to Matt and Bob and to learn from the situation that happened here. And I realize that there were some loopholes there, but I, I don't have a crystal ball, I just don't want to see that kind of stuff happen again. So if we need to kind of go through that and scrub it again and kind of maybe look at different areas and, and make sure that somebody doesn't, doesn't have to go through the same thing the Chaney's had, I think it's worth the effort, so.
Thanks, Al.
Steve? Well, it's the same thing, I, I read their letter, and is there any way where it's 90% residential, single-family that we can protect, like some of those historical neighborhoods? So there's just not at the very last lot, you know, a three- So there's just not at the very last lot, you know, a three-story apartment house on it? So I'd like to see if, you know, if we can do some protection there for some of those established neighborhoods. Because when I first got on the council, I know other council members had concern about smart code, and we were going to take an in-depth look at it. But since I've been on the council, we've just kind of piecemealed things here and there. And I, I think at some time, we maybe, with this plan, I, I like the plan, but I think we also have to look at some of the planning and zoning issues, which I know come later. But to try to adhere to some of the plan then, on that.
I mean, what, you know, what, what you can look at. So the smart code was developed, again, it's a tool to implement, to implement the plan. So it was, it was designed as such that, you know, it, it met the requirements or met the needs of the plan. So you can't just blame it on smart code. If we were to replace smart code, we'd have to really, let's just say that the zoning was created to implement it. So if we were to replace smart code, try and replace it with something that's a little more Euclidean standard zone, basic zoning language that you find nowadays, we would be looking to implement the same type of plan. Probably what you're wanting to look at is where are the boundaries of how these, this a zoning district is drawn? And you're going to always find outliers. There's always going to be a lot or a number of, or a handful of lots that will disagree with the, the implementation over their parcels or adjacent to their parcels. There is always going to be some kind of voice against the change, but, but the, you know, trying to weigh the benefits of the majority versus the minority. I mean, it's, it's difficult. It's tough, tough to draw a line. You know, where do you draw the line? Is it, is it only on the north side of Second? Or is it only at the alley between Second and Third do we draw that line? Or is it between First and Second? I mean, that's where we end up drawing the lines is, is it goes through that rezoning process. And when the rezone was done, before my time granted, you know, it would have been, gone through the review process with Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the city council for that zone. But, you know, I do understand, you know, and obviously there's been a lot of discussion regarding smart code. And, you know, whether it is, whether smart code's the problem, or whether the plan's the problem, or however it's being implemented, you know, that has, that can be looked at. It is a major land use study under, to undertake as to how we can do that. But I mean, you know, that is something that, you know, as planners or as, within the planning department, that they can begin to look at. You know, we just, you know, we try and, you know, our division, the planning division does work on all that.
Bob, excuse me, I think Warren had a comment. Did you?
Just a, a quick comment, two things. First off, the, what we're looking at tonight is a sort of a master plan update. It's sort of an overarching vision. You don't get a lot of the meat of how things are actually going to be developed over time in a master plan. That's left for the zoning code, which currently is our smart code. So we have been talking about replacing smart code for some period of time. That's been sort of held a little bit on the back burner while we updated the vision, because you don't want to create the tool to implement something if you don't have the vision dialed in. And so the plan moving forward would be working on bringing forward a replacement for some of our smart code product. Shelley suggested, I think this is a good idea, that perhaps we should have a workshop to talk about where we're at in that process and where you would like to go.
But again, this, so to reiterate, the, the addendum is the, the master, it's the overarching.
Yeah, it's the big picture. And then we dial it down from there.
Okay. Linda, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I lived downtown for most of my life, so I just moved from downtown last year. I understand what the Chaney's are saying about people looking. I, I think that we need to do anything that we can do. I know that we can't go lot to lot and make sure maybe that this doesn't happen again. But I think that we really need to take a look at it to avoid this from happening. Because what we're doing down there now and with the parking plan, although those roads look like they're really wide and things like that, there's going to be parking along all of those Second and Third Avenue, right? Second, Third Avenue, yeah. And so I just, I, I'm in favor of the, the plan as a whole, because I think that for the majority of the people that live down there that I've talked to over the last many, many decades, they want restaurants down there. They want it to be a more like shopping dense residential and commercial mix down there. But when you get all the way to eight blocks in from Spokane Street, I really think that we need to, we need to pay, maybe pay a little more attention. I'm not trying to blame it on you or anything. I'm just, that's just my opinion.
But if the, if, if the plan were approved?
Right.
Maybe a direction to staff to revisit the zoning side of it?
Some, something, well, yeah, that far, that far east.
You can also look at it as it's only a few blocks south now of where Idaho veneer site is going to be redeveloped and have another commercial center there. So.
I know. But the-
I totally understand where you're coming from though, as to, as to where the lines are drawn on the zoning and everything.
Right.
So I can understand that.
Right. I mean, to, basically, they're having a family barbecue and two stories of people are looking into their backyard. I wouldn't like that either.
Right.
So, anyway.
No further discussion. We have a motion, we have a, a motion to be made under the next item on the agenda. Is that correct?
So for this one, I believe this is just adopting the plan. So do we have a resolution for this?
Resolution for that, under action items, next, right? So we don't need to do anything right now?
We do not.
Okay. So we'll have a motion coming up in a bit. Thank you. Good discussion. Next item up is a public hearing on the corporate park zone change. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of city council. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, introducing the corporate park zone change. The applicant and the owner is the Point Partnership LLC, and their requested action tonight is to rezone approximately 23.21 acres from community commercial services to the requested industrial zoning. The project is located north of Beck, or excuse me, east of North Beck Road and north of West Point Parkway and Interstate 90, as shown on the vicinity map. The site is currently vacant without significant topology or vegetation, and the city of Post Falls provides water and sewer to the site. Current zoning is community commercial services, as noted earlier. The property to the north is also zoned CCS and has been developed with the UPS Distribution Center. To the west is the Cisco site, zoned industrial. To the south is the Maverick Travel Station, also zoned CCS. And then to the east is the undeveloped vacant lot, which was recently approved with a special use permit for the Amelia Apartment Complex. And it is not directly adjacent to the east boundary of the site. It's approximately 456 feet away. So there's an undeveloped chunk in between the two properties. So staff looks at six zone change criteria when reviewing a zone change application. The first is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. The future land use designation is business, commercial. And while the industrial zone is not explicitly called out as implementing zoning district, the requirement of being consistent with the directive of the applicable focus area is called out within the comprehensive plan. In this area, the comprehensive plan calls out the Riverbend Focus Area for the subject's property. And the comprehensive plan states that this area should continue to evolve, attracting commercial businesses, high-tech companies, hotels, entertainment establishments, and potentially additional residential. The potential for the high-tech companies to be attracted to this site, as well as the industrial precedent from the focused area, is consistent with the comprehensive The second zones change criteria is that it be consistent with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan, which have been outlined extensively in the staff report. Zoning is also assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic and natural features. The zone change is not anticipated to have any negative effects or negative impacts to the city's transportation network, and it's in conformance with the anticipated land uses and trip generations with the city's transportation master plan. Water and sewer are available to the site, and the requested zoning is in conformance with the land use assumptions in the city's water and sanitary sewer master plans. And as mentioned earlier, the site contains no geographic or natural features that would affect development of the site. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. The site is along North Beck Road and West Point Parkway. Both roadways are classified as minor arterials and are compatible with the proposed industrial zone. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This site has direct access via the interstate to the higher-intensity urban areas, but it's not considered a high-urban activity area. Lastly, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be suited, situated away from residential zoning. The site has direct access, of course, to North Beck, which allows connection to Seltice to the north and Interstate 90 to the south. The site's approximately 300, actually I have a slide for this. The site's approximately three, 438 feet away from Woodbridge South, right here. And as mentioned earlier, with that special use permit to the east for the Amelia Apartments, those are located approximately 456 feet. So again, there's that buffer of undeveloped land currently between the two. This is the list of agencies that were notified and given the chance to provide comment on this subject development. Of those three responded, Post Falls Police Department and the Post Falls Highway District were both neutral. The Idaho Department of Environmental Quality was neutral, and they provided general comments for development as it starts. That concludes my presentation for corporate park.
Questions, Laura? Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify?
Yes. And I believe the applicant is on Zoom.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes. Hi, my name is Parker Robertson with Wadsworth Development Group. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. I work for Wadsworth Development Group, who is, you know, a subsidiary or part of the Point Partners LLC. We own a lot of land just near the Capellas and Walmart out there. We think it's a really good fit. We're really excited for this project. We believe with the Cisco and the UPS building and what we have planned there, it's going to be a really good entrance to the remainder of what we have going on, what we have planned out there with access to I-15, or not I-15, sorry, I-90, I believe it is, I-15, here in Utah. With access to the interstate, it allows for some quality users that will just up the, you know, bring in jobs and bring in some really good, really good jobs for the area. So we're really excited about this project, and I'm just here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Who's wishing to testify?
Just a minute.
I'm sorry?
Just one moment.
Laura, thanks for reminding me that the applicant was online. I, I think I'm trying to get out of the Zoom mode, so I forget.
We have one that's unclear whether it's about this item or another one.
Okay.
Trying to figure it out.
Is the person here or is it written testimony?
Written. So it's, trying to figure out if we know which one it is.
Okay.
I can sing if you like.
You don't want me to sing.
Go ahead, Shelley, come on.
No.
Thank you. Nice resolution. With that, I'm assuming there's not going to be a rebuttal, so I will close the public We will need a motion on this one. I don't-
That's correct.
-see it down below. Counsel, discussion.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Think it's a great fit for that area.
I have to admit, I was doing the happy dance when I read this. Because I'm on record for saying we want to keep industrial in that area. And I will also state that if, if in fact, this is becoming, coming back to us because of the rooftops we put out there, which I was also against, then I'll eat my words.
But it is nice to see it, because it seems like it has been not too far in the distant past where we've had property come before us that was zoned industrial, asking to have it changed to commercial. And now this is going the other way, so that is, that is nice. So anyone care to throw a motion?
I would move to approve the corporate park zone change file number RZNE-0001-2021.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is a public hearing on the Black Stallion Zone Change, change. And I will open the public hearing. I've got to admit, this one, the actual geographic of, location of this one still befuddles me. That's right down the street from me, and I just am trying to figure out where it's at. Black Stallion? Mm-hmm. I know where Black Stallion is, but where this particular one is, there must be a house there or something, but I'll, I'll wait until it's presented.
Again, good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of city council. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, here tonight to introduce the Black Stallion Ranch Zone Change. The, the applicant is the City of Post Falls Planning Division on behalf of the Black Stallion Ranch homeowners. Their requested action tonight is to rezone approximately 10.7 acres from single-family residential suburban to the requested single-family zoning designation. So for a little bit of back history on this, the, in 2005, the developer proposed the Prairie Ranch PUD with R1S zoning. And the narrative with that application for the PUD asked to allow for R1 setbacks. However, as you can see in the signed findings and fact and conclusion of law, that provision for the R1 setbacks was not included in that language. And in addition, it can, it was placed, or excuse me, in addition, a condition was placed requiring a 42-foot front yard setback and a 20-foot flanking street setback. So these restrictive setbacks, the lot coverage allowances, and the lot sizes, which do not meet the R1S standards, and the confusion with the existing PUD and contradicting language is why this zone change is being brought for you tonight. It's kind of a housekeeping zone change to clean it up, make it more in conformance with what's actually built out on the site. Project location is north of West Poline Avenue and west of Chase. The subdivision is currently built out with single-family homes with exception to one lot, and that is Lot 5, Block 2, in which the owners are proposing to submit building plan applications once this zone change is completed. There are no significant topological or vegetative characteristics which would prevent further development. East Green Acres Irrigation District supplies water, and City of Post Falls is the sewer provider. This is just an aerial to give you kind of a idea of the built environment out there. Highlighted there is Lot 5, Block 2, the one undeveloped lot. Highlighted there is Lot 5, Block 2, the one undeveloped lot. Current zoning is mostly built out with single-family there. Country Meadows is the R1 here to the north. Montrose is R1 to the south. Cootney County kind of goes, wraps around it, but directly adjacent to the east is built out with single-family residents, agricultural suburban Cootney County zoning. And then directly to the west was our recently approved Berkshire Place R1 zoning. And then a little further to the east, we've got Northern Plains R1 zoning, Northern Plains First and Second with SC3. And then this undeveloped Micah Acres, the larger lot's undeveloped, the smaller lot here has a single-family residence on it. Again, here's the built environment aerial image just to get a better idea of what is existing out there. As you can see, primarily single-family homes. Staff looks at the six zone change criteria with a zone change application. The first is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. Future land use designation is low-density residential, and R1 is one of the implementing zoning districts. It should be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan, and that is outlined in the staff report. Zoning should be assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic and natural features. Poline is a minor arterial and has adequate circulation and access. Water and sewer services are already installed as the subdivision's already developed with exception to Lot 5, Block 2. And the site has no geographic or natural features that would affect further development. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. This zone change criteria is not applicable, as this is neither high-density or commercial. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity areas. As mentioned earlier, this is along Poline Avenue, and it's over a mile north of Mullen Avenue, which would be probably the closest high-intensity urban activity area. And lastly, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. This zone change criteria is also not applicable, as this is not an industrial designation, and none of the properties surrounding it are industrial. List of agencies notified and routed for consideration and request for comment. Of those, two responded. Post Falls Highway District was neutral, and Cootney County Fire and Rescue was neutral. Um, oh, sorry, I was supposed to delete that slide because there is only one motion option tonight, and that is the zone change. Questions or comments?
So Laura, there's one lot that's undeveloped in there?
One lot.
See, I was trying to find 10 acres out there that wasn't developed, and I just couldn't figure it out.
It's just the one lot.
Just the one lot.
And it wasn't a site visit, that just happens to be on our, our, my, our daily walk, so.
And a lot of those homeowners are also looking to build shops on their properties. Some of them already have it because there was confusion with the PUD on what lot coverage if we're doing R1S or R1. So some of them were implemented using the 40% max lot coverage, some of them were considered having 25% max lot coverage.
So it's truly a housekeeping item?
It is.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to testify? Oh, do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm confused. So this was, this was zoned R1S?
Correct.
But none of the houses were built as R1S?
Not that I can tell from the aerial image. None of them meet the R1S setbacks, and most of them exceed the R1S lot coverage requirements.
How does that happen?
So it was.
Or how, I guess just a better question is, how do we prevent this from happening in the future?
So it was, it's not quite technically accurate to say it was R1S. It was R1S PUD. So there was a PUD overlay on the R1S zone that changed the development standards that made it look a lot more like R1.
Okay.
But because the, the records weren't all square with each other, there was some difference in time or difference in interpretation over time. And so it was implemented a little bit differently per, for each lot.
Okay.
And so it really was always more akin to R1 because of the overlay on the R1S. The zoning said R1S, but the overlay from the PUD amended those regulations somewhat. So this, this is really trying to make what has, for all intents and purposes, been, always been an R1 subdivision, have R1 zoning.
Again, I guess my, my question, since I'm gonna throw myself under the bus again, I was on planning and zoning when this was approved, what did we do wrong? Or what, what could we do to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen in the future? Because I'm all in favor of changing this back, but I don't want to see somebody have to go through this.
So we try to do our best job at trying to document what happens in a PUD. So if somebody asks for a variation of these types of standards, we want to list those standards, so that, there's a list, so that the planner who's looking at a permit application for an addition to a home or something has a clear guidance to go to. That hasn't always been the case, as, as we do this, we become hopefully more proficient in our jobs every day, and so the level of documentation that we have today is significantly different than what there was 10 years ago, which was significantly different than what there was 20 years ago. I would, I suppose, say that in the future, when you have a, someone who asks for a zone but then wants to amend it completely to where it looks like a different zone, it might be better just to go with a different zone. It avoids a lot of confusion.
Okay. Okay.
One thing I might add is the naming. Currently, our, our procedure is if you get a PUD in a subdivision, they have the same name, like Tulamore or Montrose. This one was called Prairie Ranch PUD, but the subdivision was Black Stallion. So there was no correlation between the documents and separate files to put them together for planners that weren't here at the time.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Any wishing to testify? Neutral, wish and speak, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Well, Mr. Wolf kind of asked the question that I really stuck in my mind, because I was at P&amp;Z when they came up with their decision. And everything I looked at here looks like the developer was given an R1S zoning, but he just built whatever he felt like. It doesn't really, it doesn't fit into the R1S, and it kind of fits into the R1. But how did this happen that your plat, all your approvals, it, it made it clean through the entire system? And everything was built, except for one lot.
But again, let me interrupt if I may, that's because there was an overlay that was approved, is that correct? There was an overlay that was approved to be built on that subdivision, so that overlay allowed those houses to be built.
Well, then what's the purpose of the zoning?
Different zones allow for different developments and different overlays, and they have to go through the process to get that.
Yes, they do. And so if this thing did everything by schedule, I mean, that's why I put down there neutral, because I believe these folks need to be able to use their land the way they want to and that. They bought it, they built them in good faith. But I think there's a real problem here. I don't think this is a unicorn. I believe there's other projects out there that are going the same way. And I just really like to know how it happened.
Well, again, I think it was pretty.
It was not clear to me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I understand that, but it was approved as an overlay for that particular zone.
And it was also approved R1S.
Well, you're missing the point. It's R1S with an overlay, but I'm not going to debate that, but I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No rebuttal? That'll close the public hearing. Council.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Yep. Fix it.
Entertained a motion.
I'd move to approve the Black Stallion Zone Change File Number RZNE-0002-2021.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. That ends our public hearings. Next up is unfinished business returning ordinances and resolution, the first being
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, John Beecham, Public Works Director. I am not Ross Junkin, as called for on the agenda. He had a last-minute conflict, so I agreed to try to pitch hit, so I will do my best with this one. Here to present a paving project for summer of '21, this is for Polston Avenue and Goode Street, and it connects Seltice to Polston, kind of by Super 1, for those not familiar with it. So Super 1 is just north of this parking lot, so it would be up here on this aerial. As a bit of history, last year, we identified several roads throughout town that were in poor condition. We hired a consultant to do some analysis on those. So there's about eight or nine roads that we had this analysis for, and this is a section that we had the funding to work on this year. So that's why I'm here with the paving project. Those, the analysis really consisted of drilling cores in that asphalt to see why it was failing. And really, the picture on the right is just intended to be a visual. There's a little bit less asphalt in those roads on average than what our city standard would have us install right now, but there is no base rock underneath them, which is why they're in poor shape. So with these plans, we would add the base rock underneath them as called for and put the three inches of asphalt on top where it belongs. There's also ADA requirements to upgrade ramps wherever the, whenever we go through into a street, so we'd upgrade the three corners that are in part of this project. The contractor would have 20 working days, so about one month to do the work from start to finish. And as you might imagine, there's a number of businesses there along Polston and also on Goode that want to stay open during this, so we've got requirements in the contract. Business access must be maintained throughout the duration of the project. There's also a night work option, which would let the contractor close the road outside of business hours for those businesses, and they're responsible to coordinate what those business hours are. Engineer's estimate for the project was about quarter of a million dollars. The low bid came in at 204,000, 204, almost 900, from La Riviera, and after review by city staff and our consultant, we're recommending award of that bid to La Riviera, Inc. Contracted amount would be for that nearly 205,000, and we're requesting a 5% contingency for things that come up. Last year when we did the Bay Street project, we had a change in the sidewalk configuration that required us to spend a little bit extra to get it right when we got out in the field. So that's what that contingency is used for when we actually go to build this. Total authorization we're requesting is at 216,900 number. This is funded out of our existing budget code for street reconstruction, so this fits nicely within that number. And that.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
John, how, how much of Polston are we talking about? Just there in front of, like Wells Fargo and?
Yeah, just to, just before where it splits to being divided. I can go back to the map quick. So.
Okay, okay.
It's about two blocks from Idaho, one block would be to Goode, and then here is where our project ends.
Thank you. Any other questions, John? Entertained a motion.
I'd move to approve the bid for the Polston-Goode Street Rehabilitation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is one resolution, that is a city center, city center master plan addendum.
I'd move to approve the city's center master plan addendum.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Yep, staying.
That's right. Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is memorandum of agreement with Vista for construction of a public park and grant easement to a Vista for a crane pad. Mr. Wilson?
So this has been a long time coming.
Yay.
So we've reached the point in time where my understanding was our permits are ready to go out the door. The permits from the Idaho Department of Lands have been issued the end of last week, so we are at the point in time where a Vista is ready to begin construction on the new park facility adjacent to Falls Park. So that leads us to a point where we need to enter into a final memorandum of agreement with a Vista governing the construction phase of the project, which is attached in your, your packet, as well as an easement that as we move forward and beyond the construction phase, a Vista would have rights to access the facility for use as a crane landing pad to load barges for their use when they need to do work on the dams. So we have before you tonight an easement to allow that access, and then also the memorandum of agreement with a Vista for the construction of the park. I didn't have initially in the package, because I hadn't received them yet, the, the two attachments, two of the exhibits to the MOA. Emailed those out to you separately once they came in the end of last week, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? I think it's, it's nice to finally get to this point.
Yeah.
There's a decent chance they'll start work tomorrow.
Really?
Definitely this week. We should have them underway.
I'm holding you to tomorrow.
Where's Dave and Robbie? I rely on them for my information.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd move to approve the memorandum of agreement with a Vista for construction of a public park and grant of an easement to a Vista for a crane pad.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Last op, item under this section of the agenda is the downtown urban renewal district feasibility study. And who is, Olivia's going to. Olivia, I'm glad you had this, because I saw you in earlier, and I thought, did I forget to recognize her at an earlier hearing, so I'm glad I didn't.
Sorry, I'm wondering where the feasibility study is. That's the Pleasant View one. It's a different one. Did you send it to me earlier today?
I put it on the desktop.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna let her find it. Anyways, just wanted to, again, just a quick reintroduction. Olivia Metz with the Metz Group, she's been working on the feasibility study, and she also was working with us on the city center master plan addendum as well. Again, this all is big part of the overall projects for the downtown as to how we are going to be able to see these, the, the, the master pan, plan begin to be implemented. Anyways, for lack of time, because it's getting late, I'm gonna let her go.
Thank you.
As this is just an update, I'll be really quick. We did have a workshop on this a couple months ago or so, so, uh, thank you for having me again here, Council, Mayor, and I'm going to, obviously, we've been under, we've been underway for over a year, and we wanted to make it in conjunction with the master plan update, really based on the potential for, or making sure that the infrastructure improvement program or projects were really up to par with what the public and stakeholders were agreeing upon. So as Matt highlighted earlier, this is the, the URD boundary that really coincides with the actual master plan update as well. And we alluded to this in our, in our workshop, but it's a, it's a large boundary mainly because of the connectivity of the different nodes, making sure that there's connectivity within the district and north of the highway, and making sure it all kind of connects. So in order to build out the So in order to build out the potential for tax increment revenue, in order to understand what type of projections we're looking at, and in order to understand whether or not the district will be feasible, we have to kind of look at what type of development might occur. And there's three catalyst projects that we, that really will help spur development within the project and increment. But also, within this, we looked at, I looked at every single parcel within the district using the parking plan. And Welch Comer, as well as John Manley, had built out different development scenarios. And so that's what that, the future development is really based on. And that's what the projected assessed values are based on. So we have to kind of go off of something, since it's an infill development project, and it's not based on some developer coming in and saying, this is what we are going to do. So. This shows, and I don't, I don't think you guys could see it very well, but let me see if I could even zoom in. Okay. Somewhat. Can't even see the, so this really shows where development will occur and where it will change. And so the city staff had put this map together to show where the proposed development will occur. And as you can see, the former veneer site is where a lot of the development will occur, as well as the landings. And then north of the freeway where the old GW Hunter's site is. And so to go into a little bit of some of the major developments that are currently proposed that we do know about or at the time of this study, this is the veneer mill site redevelopment master plan. And they are proposing 126 units of mixed, a mix of urban and garden townhomes, as well as a 200-unit multifamily complex, proposed hotel, assisted living facility, as well as 76,000 square feet of commercial space. And also, as proposed at the time of this study, was, is the former GW Hunter's site. And it's also a mixed-use development with the coffee shop on the northwest corner there, or northeast corner there, and the existing coffee shop. And to the south is an event center with banquet facilities and a pedestrian plaza restaurant and two ten-plex apartment buildings. And then not final, the sale at the landings was not final during the time of this analysis. So the only way to build that out was to base it on current and future land use and planning, future land use plans. And so, and that's primarily, primarily mixed use with an emphasis on commercial development. So, once you have all of the potential future development, those, that's really what's going to be driving the revenue side of things. We have to look at the expenditures. And so, public infrastructure, and this is really what will help drive the development within the district. And so, as Matt had alluded to earlier, a lot of the public infrastructure was prioritized in earlier segments to make sure that it really aligns with what development is occurring today and what will, what would be most important based on the master plan and prioritized based on the master plan and stakeholder engagements. And so with that, the economic feasibility, because there are so many different infrastructure projects that could be, could be proposed, we did tier them out. And what the economic feasibility study really focuses on is this tier-one infrastructure list. Now, this, you know, based on market conditions, this may change. And based on funding opportunities, or if development occurs at a faster pace than predicted, then any of these projects can be reprioritized by council and the agency at any given moment. So to summarize and to sum it all up, based on that projected future development, the cumulative estimated tax increment revenue generated by, at the end of the district life, with no development, if you weren't to have any development occur, and just as is today, it would create, generate $9.1 million in increment. At 50% developed, based on the development that we projected out and the proposed developments that we do know about, at 50%, if only 50% of that development occurred, 19.2 million, or 2.8 million of tax increment revenue will be generated. And then at 100%, it's 29.4 million. So with that, it will also increase the total tax, taxable valuation of the city to $3.7 billion at the end of the life of the district at 100% developed. And jobs are a huge, huge aspect of urban renewal, and as well as for this, a priority for the city. And so currently, within the district, which was very interesting, over 1,700 jobs actually exist within the district boundary, boundary today. And 30% of those jobs are residents of Post Falls, or are Post Falls residents. So based on the commercial development that will, that is projected to occur in the develop, or in the district, I'm estimating of 1,000 jobs would be generated and 162 indirect jobs. And we, based on the 30% of Post Falls residents actually working in the district today, you could probably account for 30% of Post Falls residents to be having 30% of those jobs. So the next steps are, next Tuesday, the feasibility study is going to the commission and the plan, and for them to approve on April 27th. And then it will go to P and Z, May 11th, and then back to you guys on June 1st for approval. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Olivia?
I went through it really quick, just because I know there's a lot, we went through a lot of time today.
Thank you. Now, do we need to take action on this, since it's going to urban renewal?
So that's not a requirement that you approve this at this step? It'll be integrated into the plan, the urban renewal plan? And that will be the subject of a future public hearing on June 1st? You can, if you want to, adopt this tonight, or that's totally fine and totally appropriate.
Wait until June 1st?
The language that I think I put in the memo was just basically to accept it and recognize that it would be incorporated into the urbanal plan.
Has planning and zoning seen this?
The feasibility study? No. It goes, so urban, so this was kind of one of those steps that we legally don't have to take. We just want, again, we're trying to keep everybody informed and continue to get the buy-in as necessary. What's happening with the feasibility study now is it is going to urban renewal to be incorporated into the plan that they have been drafting. Urban renewal will address that plan and the feasibility study next week, I believe, at their, at their workshop. After that, it will be noticed and sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 11th.
So just let it go through the normal channels.
Yeah, I hate to approve it before the other two.
It's not really approving. It was just kind of accept.
There's a little bit of confusion then.
Recognize.
What the planning commission is going to be looking at is a different document than this. This is one element of the plan. They look at the plan, and the question they're asked is, does the plan conform with the comprehensive plan? So they're not really going to dive into the numbers. It's just become, in some ways, an appendix to that, to the plan. That's gonna take this and say, how do we accomplish this? This is the goals. How do we accomplish this?
Really noted.
I think she's shown us that this is feasible, that we want to move forward. So whatever we need to do tonight to move it forward, I'm all for that.
This is one of those great ones where you can't go wrong.
So do we make a motion to accept it then?
Sure.
I make a motion to accept the feasibility study as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. I'd just like to say before we vote, thank you very much. The downtown, especially the old mill site, has been something I've wanted to see develop in the proper fashion. And I'm very excited with the restaurant, coffee shop that Mr. Smock is looking to put in. And I think there's additional office space planned for that area. And I think that that's a very good use of that property. So, as well as the old mill, the veneer site. So I'm excited that we're gonna start moving those two areas forward. So that's just my comment. But with that, roll call, please.
And I think those will be catalyst projects. And so I think that we will far exceed our expectations on the revenue side of things. So.
Thank you. Roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Olivia. New business. Two items. Fiscal year 2020 comprehensive, comprehensive annual financial report. Jason?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I'm looking for tonight is the fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report has been completed and audited. So what I'm looking for is your acceptance of it. In your council packet, what I had put together is there are three items from them was, one was the independent audit letter, which basically says management's responsible for the financial statements. I'm responsible for them. And then they reviewed them to make sure there's no mis, what they say in here, material misstatements, whether due to error or fraud. And they came back with, everything looked fine. Also, the second letter that they included in the council packet is their independent audit report for internal controls. And one thing they're looking at is basically from cash receiving to depositing and anything in between, whether we receive grants and report the grants. And any, any money that come in, they're auditing our policies. And also, if we follow those along with the internal controls. So not only is it a financial audit, but they also make sure we comply with our own rules, which is nice. And the last letter is, basically, it's a letter to council. They provide that every year, saying if they had any issues with completing the audit, if there's any disagreements with staff, if there's any problems for them trying to complete their workload. And also, there's also a section of the audit letter that says if they, if we had a disagreement, did I go an opinion shop elsewhere? And they also disclosed that there was none of that. So. They had a pretty good audit this year. So.
Is that, do they still call it an unqualified opinion, or is that old school?
No, a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion. Either one works.
Yeah. Very nice. It's nice to get the reports back from the independent accountants. Tell them you're doing things right.
The last page they had put on here was that there's a journal entry that they provided. They provide the Percy entries because it's a state pension board. So they list out what is the portion of Post Falls. So that's what they do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Probably need to make him, motion to accept?
I'd move to approve fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Next up is the appeal of the North Shore District subdivision in P U D. And before I turn it over to Mr. Wilson, I'm not gonna add any comments on this. If this comes before council for a decision on the actual item itself, I will declare a conflict. But tonight, I don't believe that's part of the discussion. It's more, we'll let Mr. Wilson explain it. But I will not participate in any discussion on it, other than just maybe taking a roll call. So, Mr. Wilson?
So tonight, we have before you a request from staff to consider whether or not you want to order mediation on a land use matter. The North Shore District subdivision and planned unit development was approved by the planning commission a month and a half, two months ago. At this point, a group of neighbors have hired an attorney. They have appealed that approval to the city council. We haven't scheduled a hearing just yet on this matter, because there was a question about whether the parties would like to mediate this decision. What that involves is essentially the city hires a mediator and sees if there is any common ground that can be found between the parties prior to presenting that to you at a public hearing. Mediation can occur at any point in time during a land use proceeding. The trick to that is if you have it after the hearing, and there's a different resolution that's arrived at, you have to have another public hearing to go back over and approve that change. So we wanted to ask before the public hearing whether or not this is a step that you wanted to take. We've talked with both the applicant and with the attorney for the neighbors. They are both amenable and willing to go through mediation in the hopes of finding some common ground on this application. The statutes regarding mediation requires that the city pays for the first session. That's probably up to, say, $3,000. We haven't tried to go shopping yet for a mediator, but that's in that ballpark is what that cost would be. So it's really up to you to determine tonight whether or not you want to order mediation on this issue. If that's the case, we'll hire a mediator and get that scheduled prior to scheduling this for a public hearing.
Comments?
I think it's the right direction to go.
I agree.
Otherwise, we're just gonna be spending a lot of money for those expensive attorneys.
I agree.
Anybody disagree?
No.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I would move to approve the appeal process, hiring of a mediator.
So how about we move to approve the ordering mediation in the North Shore District subdivision in P U D?
Sounds good to me.
That, too. Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative staff reports. And I've asked Jason to bring forth some documentation. Sometimes we'll get citizen comments where people make statements, have an understanding. Excuse me, they may not be accurate, but if that's stated in public, people tend to believe it. And so I've asked Jason to go back and address a comment that was made two weeks ago and show us copies of a utility bill.
What I have done is, I'm Jason Faulkner, Finance Director. What I have done is I had taken somebody's on the council, their utility bill that showed their winter consumption and their summer consumption. And I just wanted to present it side by side. And then you can see what the base fees are, and then what the, if you go back and reference check them with the fee resolution, you'll see. So the first one I had, there's the residential example number one for a winter month. There was two usage. The water was $2.50. And note the base fee of the water. It was $11.37 for the water. And the wastewater is $56.90. And that's for two units. So as we go, not much water used in the wintertime that month. But then if you switch over for example two, where there's the summer months, you'll see there's a usage of 44, and the base unit for water is still the $11.37, and the wastewater is still the $56.90. So we toggle back. Usage of two is still $56.90, and usage of 44 is $56.90. For residential, it does not change. So.
We're looking at wastewater.
Wastewater does not change, yeah. Just, just the water usage itself changes.
Good.
So this is basically irrigation?
Well, it could be irrigation, depending on if they may have a pool, water the yard, cars, depends on what's going on, but could be.
But the wastewater is sewer.
Wastewater sewer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason.
Next item up is citizens' comment. And this, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Name your record when you get up, please, sir.
Good evening. Try to make it quick. Howard Burns, Rocky Point Court. Is that good enough? Or do I need to give it all?
That's fine.
Okay. I have three items. I'll try to, three different issues. The first is a fire impact fee. And I have met with Chief Ray personally, Chief Way, and really want to support the fire bond. In my heart, I think it's the right thing to do. But if there's no fire impact fee, I cannot justify myself. My wife will not support the fire bond. We want to know that the city, and I know you can't implement it in time for the May election, but as a sign of confidence for myself, I guess I'm asking, or for others, does, do you folks support implementing a fire impact fee in the not-too-distant future?
Quick question, if I may.
Quick question, if I may, can we, is that something that's allowable for the cities to do, or does that have to come from the state, have to approve that, like a school?
So, quick answer, the state statute allows for us to collect impact fees on behalf of fire districts. We have not been formally approached yet by the fire district, we expect that that is coming. I believe there is a piece of legislation pending this year, the session's just wrapping up, that may allow them to also cover impact fees for rolling stock. Not sure how that's panning out just yet, but that may be a piece of what they're looking for as we move forward, maybe asking for impact fees for engines as well.
Okay. So, again, we, excuse me, we can't make that decision, they have to bring it to us, and if they do, then we will.
So, I guess, I know they're going to bring it to you. And it's going to, I guess, my question would be, do any of you have great angst over having a fire impact fee? You vote for police impact fees, but you haven't not had a fire impact fee since, it was on the, it was here in 2009, it was never collected for some reason. Are you adverse to fire impact fees?
I'm not gonna speak for the council, but I'll say that I'm willing to look at an impact fee if it's presented and justifiable.
Anybody else wanna weigh in?
I pretty much echo what the mayor said.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it, but I wanna see all the details.
Same thing, wanna see it first.
Okay. Well, I'm, I hope you see it soon.
Good. Next point.
Next item. You just, I just saw this today, you're working on this Pleasant View annexation in the very far north of the city. And I don't know if any of you have been in a roundabout when a semi-trailer truck comes through the roundabout. But, believe me, you do not wanna be there. And there should be no roundabouts on Pleasant View, if you're gonna have industrial all the way up there. Because a semi-trailer truck does not make it through the roundabout without going through both lanes, if not over the curb in the middle. And you need to go see it if you haven't. It's not a design that works. Last but not least is notice to the public of hearings and items for the city. And I've sent out some, I've given you some information. You have one hearing coming up for Foxtail. There's a seven-page agenda item, and if you read the agenda item summary of what's happening at the front part, and I'm not trying to cast aspersions on city staff, and then you look through the packet and all of the little maps, there is no way, without some kind of rudimentary understanding of zoning, that you can figure out what is being requested. The fact is that the Foxtail developer seems to be saying, I'm gonna get rid of 289 dwelling units, I'm gonna take 12 acres off of the area, and I'm gonna put in 716 units. The map doesn't show anything about that, it shows the existing 289 single-family homes with a little apartment project. So, if I'm looking at that, I just cannot visualize how the residential change is going to take place. I think the notice is very disingenuous. And then on top of that, in terms of public notice, both this piece and all notices, little tiny yellow signs, I've given you a picture on Prairie Avenue of the yellow sign being placed. At 45 miles an hour, you drive by and you see the little yellow sign, who knows what it is, maybe they're got llamas for sale, I don't know, but I certainly can't read it. If I wanna read it, I try to pull off on the dirt road to the side, and the sign is buried down at the bottom of a swale. To get over there, you have to take life and limb in hand, because Prairie is whipping by, everybody's very anxious to get through, because the signal is all jived up because of the work going on. I would tell you that the sign is, that type of sign is a reason citizens feel that things happen, and they don't know anything about them. And I would ask you to change your notice ordinance. And I have taken the liberty of trying to come up with something to fix it, because just bitching isn't good enough. This is a two-by-four piece of plywood. It has four-inch letters on it. If you posted this, you could have a map put on, it could be, this sign could be reused every single time, and it should be high enough up, so it's got this height. So, when I'm in a car, I can see this sign, says, there's a hearing coming up, pay attention, don't complain you didn't know about it, because it's a nice, big sign I can read from the car. And it should have a way for me to go get additional information that I could read also. So, if you put a whiteboard here, you could reuse the sign time and time and time again. It's not a hard prospect, the applicant could pay for it. You could have a whole bunch of these, that the city hires a real estate company to put up, the real estate sign people go and put it up. But if you look at my pictures on Prairie and the one on, well, they're both on Prairie, the one little sign for the one at Maguire, the sign's posted on what looks like a five-acre lot, little hearing, and actually, it's talking about 342 acres.
Okay, thank you. Time's up, but we let you go, but I appreciate it.
So, here's what I would recommend, I've given you actually an ordinance to think about.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
We have a couple from the internet.
Okay. To be read?
Let him go first.
Oh, do you wanna come forward? Did you wanna speak?
Mike Bowles, Earl again. Just touching on Mr. Burns has said, well, the first thing about is the signs, they are very small. I won't show the, I've got pictures of, one particular one, it almost sounds like a for-sale sign. And if somebody doesn't understand all the terminology on it, they think, oh, this is great, when it might not be so great. And like another one was up on Greens Ferry for one they just had on, there was no place to pull over and read it. I mean, I finally had to pull over and walk back on the side of the road to try and read the sign. So, it is something I think for public noticing that should be done. The same thing up on Spencer, they built an apartment complex, nobody heard anything about it, because they sent the notice to the owners within 300 feet. Well, one was an apartment complex across the street under construction, the other one was a mobile home park. So, people, all of a sudden, they come home, and a whole forest has been torn down, and they're building 300-unit apartment complex. And I would welcome you to go talk to the people over there, the neighbors, but, you know, wear a vest, too, because the people over there are irate over that. The other things, we're talking about the, how does this happen on these PUDs and stuff like that, and all this happened and that happened. A real simple solution is start looking at what a PUD actually is. Quit allowing them to be, if you look at the definition of what a PUD and its origination was back in Britain in the rewilded after World War II, was designed around 100, 200 acres, where they would take and have residential, commercial, basically, you could live, work, and play all within a certain area. It was never intended to supersede zoning codes and everything else. So, if you start looking at it, and even another definition, planned unit development means an area of land in which a variety of residential, commercial, and industrial or uses, or commercial, industrial development, developed under single ownership or control and accommodated in a pre-planned environment. That section is 18.08404, this Post Falls Municipal Code. So, if they quit allowing them to take every little thing, or we're gonna call it, you know, this, and then now it's a PUD, and start looking at what was the intent of the PUD, I think we'd have a lot of people a lot happier than not seeing everything getting torn apart here. And find a way to really let the public know, so they understand what is being presented for them, and have a chance to come in and speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just state that while I agree signs are small, that we are required by law to post, and we post it in the newspaper, and I understand, not everybody looks at it, I happen to, but it is not just a sign, it is also residents within a certain number of feet, 300 feet.
300.
Are mailed, and it is posted in the newspaper. Now, I understand, it's still a very small sign, but I just wanna let you know, that's not the only, that's not the only notification, so.
No, I know there is a 300, that's a really small distance, considering it affects people for.
But it's also in the paper as well, so, just for information. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Online.
Oh, online, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you.
These were submitted through the website. Dale Euler on Fox Kit Lane says, I strongly oppose more apartments, there are already apartments going up west of Zoros, the traffic is already overwhelming, and to add that much more concentration of people to this area is wrong. I've lived here my whole, my whole life, and this is, this overbuilding is ruining this beautiful place that we know and love. Eric Calbert asks, what is the plan for Greens Ferry Road from 12th to 16th? And Rachel Anderson on Figwood Court writes, hello, I'm a resident of the Woodbridge South neighborhood off of Point Parkway near State Line. We recently learned that there was, has been a request to build a trucking hub on Lot One, Block One in this area. I would like to oppose this and join the many voices in our community that do not want this to be built for multiple reasons. Number one, truck, traffic of large trucks through the, through and next to residential homes, which would bog up the already busy freeway entrances and exits. Number two, safety of residents, childrens, and animals. Number three, pollution from the trucks, from the large trucks and heavy equipment. Number four, having a station this close to our residential properties will decrease home value significantly. I am not an official or well-versed in zoning matters, but as a resident, I strongly believe that zoning this area, growing area for more residential properties, restaurants or shopping areas, will increase the value of the area and ultimately boost the economy as opposed to more industrial properties. North Idaho is growing at a high rate, and having a location with these types of resources right on the border and in between two large cities would draw, also draw more people in and provide a better environment for all. Recognizing or having a residential, commercial lot as opposed to an industrial business in this location would be better. Thank you for your time, and I hope that my voice will make a difference in your decision regarding this matter.
Shannon, will you please send Bob Seal and I the comment on 12th to 16th on Greens Ferry Road, so we can respond? And then also the third one you just read, because that goes for a special use permit, which is a different.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council comments. Mr. Wolf, you're gonna talk to us about the legislation that was suggested to us that we adopt out of Boulder City, Nevada.
I am, and I'll keep it brief. So, as we are aware, there's a lot of chatter out there about the growth, and we were, there are at least two initiatives that have been brought forth to Post Falls and Rathdrum. And they were, by the admission of the Pope folks that wrote those, those were patterned after a controlled-growth ordinance in Boulder City, Nevada. So, I took it upon myself to call the city manager in Boulder City, find out how it was working for them. Well, what I found out was Boulder City and Post Falls are quite different. Boulder City was a city that was created to build Boulder Dam, which then became Hoover Dam. So, it was a government-owned city. They owned all the land, those were the workers, they built the stores, they did everything. They deeded in 1960, well, 1958, 1958, US government, government deeded 208 square miles of land to the city of Boulder, Boulder City. Of that 208 square miles, about 20 square miles has been developed into what is now Boulder City. So, the entire city and everything around it is owned by the city, except for about 20 square miles, in difference to our own Prairie out here that's owned by private individuals. In 1979, the area was exposed to a rapid growth, basically because of the development of Las Vegas and Henderson, which was closer. People living in Boulder City decided that they did not wanna become another Henderson, they did not wanna have casinos and hotels in Boulder City, so they created this controlled-growth That ordinance is very similar to, or almost identical to what's been presented to us, and that is to limit housing permits to 120 per year and a limitation on hotel development. I asked the city manager, well, how's that working for you guys? I mean, are you fighting with people over this? And he said, well, no, because it goes back to the city charter. The city charter is really what limits the development. And they've only reached that 120 permits once, when that was last year, it's the first time since this was put in place, 1979, that that's been put in place. He did see that that could change a little bit in the future, because the median age of the city is 53, so it's definitely a retirement community. Took it one step further to look into the charter. What keeps this town from growing is the fact that any sale of city-owned property, which is, again, the entire 200 acres around there, requires a vote of the city in excess of one acre. So, if you wanna buy one acre of land or more, you have to get the entire population of Boulder City to vote for it. So, the only reason I bring this up is, this is a lot different. I'm not a, I'm not a pro-growth, I'm not an anti-growth, but if we're gonna compare ourselves to other areas, or somebody's gonna ask us to do something that's going on in another area, I think it's important to know some of the stuff behind it, so that's why I wanted to present that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping for any questions that I might be able to answer.
Do they put it on the ballot? So, if I wanna buy five acres, they actually have a city election, and everybody gets to vote, whether I get to buy an acre?
I don't know the actual mechanism, it just says right there in the deposition that all city-owned land shall be sold or otherwise deposed of by ordinance, and any sales or disposition of parcels of more than one acre must be approved by the registered voters of the city at an election, held in conjunction and accordance with the election.
There you go.
Blah, blah, blah. So, I guess they have an election.
Again, thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah. I do have a comment. I mentioned earlier, and I appreciate Jason showing that utility bill, because again, people make statements that really aren't true. And if we don't call people on it at the time, people hear it and believe it is true. So, that's why I appreciate Jason showing that, and I know Shelley mentioned at last meeting that what was said was inaccurate, so again, that was evidence of that. But we also heard from a lady who was complaining about traffic. And one of the comments made was that this person was irritated, because no one from the city council had gone out to visit her.
Oh.
Or call her. And she insisted the council members phone her directly. You know, that's not something we ordinarily do. And when I hear that the city has not taken action, if people don't like the answer they receive, oftentimes, they think that the city hasn't taken action on it. Well, I've got two memos here. So, this first came to us in June of 2020, not quite a year ago. This is a memo to City Administrator Andrew from Assistant City Engineer Robert Paulus, talking about how he had gone up, he had looked at the road, he had done his, he had done his study, he had spent the time, they'd put signs up to, or he gave crash information, accidents, talked about the roadway, talked about speed bumps, roundabouts, et cetera. So, we did hear the concern, we did hear the complaint, and the engineering department did do what they're supposed to do, and they took a look at it. In addition, also, June 22nd, 2020, Captain Jason Mealer sent Chief Knight a memo, talking about how they had visited with this person. They'd been out there several times, two officers had been assigned to go out and visit with her, which they have on several occasions. They did put up the, and I won't know what they're called, but they're the flashing signs that tell you to slow down, tell you how fast you're going, I think they did traffic studies as well. And basically, neither of those two memos suggested that anything needed to be done as far as lowering speed limit, speed bumps don't work on a road like that, that the roundabouts were adequately safe. I talked to Chief Knight earlier, and I think we all recognize when kids are kids and driving, they get out of school, they tend to drive fast. And so, the city, the police department has upped the number of officers out there patrolling the area, and will continue to do so. My point in all this is, we do hear, we do respond, but the fact that myself nor the council makes a personal visit or phone call does not mean that we haven't done what has been requested. And again, time after time, we hear this kind of comment that is not representative of the truth. So, I think it's important to know what is being done, and that we do hear citizens' concerns, and we will address them accordingly. So, maybe kind of windy, but it's gotten worse, I think, over the last several months. So, from now on, people come up, citizen comments, make comments that are not accurate, we'll try to call them on it at that point, just so they are informed, and not to be critical, but I want them to know the truth, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Council comments? Seeing none, which is a good thing, 'cause my voice is gone. We do need an executive session tonight?
We do.
We're gonna try to keep it at two minutes, is that?
15 minutes.
15 minutes.
We do need an executive session.
I, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061C, to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency, and further, that no action will be taken during the session, and the session will last no longer than 15 minutes.
Approximately 15 minutes.
Approximately?
Yes, approximately.
We have a motion to second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Orders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.